The last five years. It is with some regret that for the first time in six years, this council's portion of the council tax is proposed to rise. We've been extremely proud to have frozen the council tax for the last six years, and we wanted to give something back to all residents, because of course, apart from maybe going on our roads and travelling on our pavements, they don't all use our services. Our leave in freezing the council tax, of course, has not been followed by the police, fire and some districts, but they are individual decisions made by those authorities, and I respect their choices. This year, there is a proposal to raise 1.99% on the general council tax, an adult social care precept of 2%, and then a Somerset Rivers Authority precept of 1.25%. With inflation, with democratic changes, with national living wage and with new burdens, unfortunately, we cannot afford to stand still. Therefore, this financial year, we will be making a change. The general 1.99% rise will help pay for the essential services to provide support to vulnerable childrens and adults, and of course, our other key services. The adult social care 2% precept is helpful, a cost shunt from government, in my view, but it will bring in an extra £4 million to this authority, unfortunately, if you take into account the cost of the national living wage. Now, that comes from around £4 million, so almost by putting forward that precept, we are again standing still. The 1.25% is essential for the Somerset Rivers Authority to carry on the good work that they have done. It has been described by the Secretary of State as a temporary measure before they pass legislation to create a separate precepting authority. We must keep pressure on central government to make sure they carry on that promise. I have told them very, very clearly, it is one-off, and I have already spotted some ambiguity, shall we say, in their views. Again, I would prefer central government to fund this, especially after, of course, the Christmas of flooding throughout the country. Yes, it highlights the need to protect Somerset, but I would like that they actually turned around and said, here's something extra for you Somerset, rather than shunt the costs onto the Somerset taxpayer, but we are where we are. Councillors should note that even despite those increases, I believe we are still the second lowest council tax forshire authorities. With those rises, we moved from the bottom of the pile, and less Hampshire, but up there is even more, we will now be the second lowest council tax, so that's still not a bad news, bad news story. If I can move on to the revenue budget and the savings. We have reached a significant £25 million shortfall this financial year. Let me thank officers for all their hard work, let me thank councillors on Cabinet, on scrutiny committees, for going over every single detail and minimising the impact. So, we are left today with a decision on the best part of £12 million worth of savings to be made. We've bridged the additional £13 million by better-than-expected council tax collections and managing and negotiating our contracts in a better way. My colleagues on Cabinet will speak to those savings and of course, answer any questions on those savings shortly, chairman. Some may say that it's a bit of a double whammy for residents, you're cutting your services and you're putting up your council tax. When I say, it's a tough budget, we're not helped by, you know, a generation of underfunding by central government, regardless of what political colours actually end up in number 10. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, the latest stats are, we lose out £27 million a year. We are the third worst-funded shire authority in the country. We only have a small amount of reserves to use to cushion any blows, and when you consider Hampshire, we've got £336 million reserves, Lancashire £195, Derbyshire £130 million, then certainly our reserves, obviously, are dwarfed by that. But councillor, it's in the new green papers before, but as you are aware, we did receive an extra £2.9 million. On the one hand, government took more money than we were expecting, and then gave us £2.9 million back. Thank you for the money, it's all enough, but we are where we are. So, there is a proposal on how we use this money within the budget. The budget was going to be using £2.2 million worth of reserves, now we've had this extra money, I suggest we use this extra money so we don't have to use reserves. There will be £425,000 for investment in adult social care, children's social care, specifically looking at reducing the cost of high-cost placements. There will be, as far as it can go, £150,000, hopefully county-wide, but as far as we can go, highway gully and verge cleaning, so that's new money to spend on looking after our county, and like I said, that would go as far as we can. I propose that we use £100,000 for some seed funding towards the new vision, if that is approved later on today by council, and then there's £25,000 for economic development projects. In my view, the money was unexpected, we are looking to use it prudently, we are looking to invest in our future, in our highways, in our economy, and those residents that need our support. In relation to the capital budget, that's a £75 million good news story, in my view. Yes, we've got government grants, yes, we're using our own resources, but again, we are investing in vital services for children, for adults, and the economy, and so I really hope that we're all on board in relation to the capital budget. Members will note that in relation to the capital and the revenue budgets, we have done the risk assessments, we have done the equalities assessments, we do our best to comply with the Equalities Act, and ensure that we're given due regard to the difficult decisions that we have to make, that we take into account those parts of our society, those people in our society that necessarily don't have a voice and have special needs, and, you know, we've done the assessments, we've done the work, and, you know, obviously, those assessments don't always say it's the best thing to do, of course they don't, they point out the risks, as they should do, but when you get your budget cut so many times, of course, there has to be some element of risk. Chairman, I just want to close and to say that, again, thank you to everyone who's been involved in the budget process, it is a balanced budget, it is a robust budget, and I will commend it to councillor for its involvement. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, chairman. I just want to add my thanks to the scrutiny chairs, who've obviously put in extra work, had extra meetings, and done some really good work on looking at both the capital and the revenue spending. My thanks to them. Following up from that, I think the first question is Simon Coles.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of comments, really. Ken Rosman has made the point, it's a double whammy, pay more, get less, which is hardly helpful. And the other point I wanted to make was about the temporary tax, temporary flooding tax. Temporary tax has a habit in this country of remaining. Income tax was a temporary tax, but it was introduced in 1799. It's still with us. When it started, it affected probably less than a half percent of the population, it now actually affects 25 million of us. So, this idea of it being temporary is one that I would view with more than a little caution. It is a flooding tax, and yet, there we are, talking about creating this flooding tax, and yet, other areas that have been affected, Cumbria, Yorkshire, Lancashire, their county councils are saying, no to the government, we won't have a precept, we want the government to stand with that, we want central government to take this on. Now, the concern I've got is, I remember the pictures on the television of our Prime Minister David Cameron, standing in his lovely green well, he's saying, money is no object, we will solve this, and promptly then going on to say, actually, what I didn't tell you is, we're going to solve it with your money, you're going to be taxed 1.25% to ensure that you can pay your own way. And this is not what is happening across the country. I lament the fact that Ken Rosman and his team have been unable to obtain more money from central government, and I think frankly, you should be ashamed of yourself.
And I do want to hear that. Thank you ever so much for those comments. Well, let's start off on the positive, shall we? Completely agree with previous speaker, yes, the Prime Minister did come down and did say, money is no object, and I think I mentioned this, chairman, before, I have challenged him directly on that, and as quick as a flash, a civil servant jumped in and went out for the immediate crisis. And I said, well, no, I didn't see the small print when the statement was made, so, you know, we completely agree on that. But, let's look on the plus side. We have received £30 million worth of investment. That £30 million has paid for two ways of dredging. That investment has raised the road much on east, so those residents won't be cut off again. That investment has already tamed the mini dam, which was the A372 at Beer Wall, and so the water's backed up and backed up the entire system, it's created, you know, a new system, and government money will also be widening the River Sowie, so there has been considerable government investment, but I do share with you, you know, obviously, we have been, well, as I said, costs shunted. I don't think you should make criticisms you've done, I think that's a little bit disappointing. You're incorrect when you say other local authorities have said no, these conversations were taking place long before other local authorities had their flooding crises over the last winter, and they haven't had an opportunity, they are still in recovery, which we were in, obviously, as you all tell you, for a number of months, many years, in some cases. So, they haven't had the opportunity for this. You know, the Secretary of State for DEFRA and DCLG, you know, came together and said that this is what we are proposing for this year, and I have to hold them to that promise, and I want your support to actually do that. So, we can say in one Somerset voice, thank you ever so much, Somerset Rivers Authority, we will fund it this year, but we want the legislation to go forward, because we don't want it to turn into something we will carry on forever day. And that was my fear, and like I mentioned earlier, I'm sure you heard, you know, I did say, I have noticed some backtracking already, and I have to make sure, and I write it in letters, and I think I'm writing one again now, ready for signature later on today, and every response I get, I don't really get a response to the question I'm asked. So, I have to shout to the government, and I will continue to shout to the government, and I look forward to you supporting this, but also supporting us in our answer of central government.
I have three more speakers registered to vote, to speak, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. I'm hoping we're going to take this vote in two parts, and the capital investment programme is fine, and I'm quite happy to support that. Revenue budget proposals, I remain concerned that we have some elements of that. John, you mentioned the risk assessments have been done, I'm just wondering what the risk assessment process said about the cuts to the pathway for adults. I've raised this issue before in this chamber and in committee, and I'm just wondering where the risk assessment suggests that the sex offenders and arsonists that are so carefully managed in the community at the moment will end up, given that it's very likely that these cuts will lead to the closure of the establishment that currently manages them. And then, secondly, I just wanted to add the point that while John doesn't agree, says with the cuts have been made to local government, everyone on that side of the aisle went out 12 months ago and vigorously campaigned for a government that they knew would do this to us, so it sounds a bit clear, Chair.
What, are you going to answer the question about before?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I hear what you're saying, Mike. As you know, we've gone through this, we've had been through our risk assessments in detail, and we went through this at Cabinet. All I would say is, the way forward, as far as these people are concerned, we have granted £309,000 towards the ongoing work with the districts in particular, and the other partners like Torren Homeless and similar. As far as we are concerned, we have covered those various points. I'm happy to talk to Mike about it at a separate time, if he so wishes.
Thank you, my next speaker's question is from Jill Shaw.
Thank you very much. My concern is that we are shouting and screaming at the government collectively, cross-party, to give us more money. The government have given us more money, not a lot, has to be said, a tiny bit, but they've given it to us for specific things, and I know you have this lovely procedure nowadays where you're free to use it for what you like, but £1.795 million extra for rural services delivery grant, going into balances. You could argue that some of the one-off investment, one-off investor-safe measures for adult social care affect rural areas, you could argue that the county-wide gully and verge cleaning exercise is supporting rural areas, I certainly hope so, but the vast majority of that money is shoved back into balances. Communities, local government departments and the ministers are already criticising and have been for some time, councils' balances, and they, from time to time, want to look at your balances and see, well, what are they for, what is this all about? Shoving the money into balances, I think, may cause us a problem in terms of our future bids for funding. I'm extremely disappointed, extremely disappointed, and, you know, there is an argument that says, where's the money gone, John? Well, the money's going into balances to be stored up for something else, and not to be spent on protecting the bus services, to protect the services for adults with learning difficulties, particularly in rural areas, to protect our children in rural areas, young carers that I'm particularly passionate about, they're in, you know, areas where we don't even know where they are, we don't even know to what extent they are caring for the people, the families that they are living with. And I'm very, very worried that the next time I go banging on a minister's door, he's going to say, well, hi, come on, I gave you a load of money, and what did you do? Shoved it into balances. It's not really where I think we should be, and had I had these papers a week ago, of course, we couldn't, because we didn't know about it that quickly, I would seriously have been working up alternatives to this. We're not in a position to be able to do that this morning, but I am in a position to be able to say, John, I'm sorry, I can't support this budget, particularly, for lots of other reasons as well, but particularly for this reason, that I do not support keeping money in balances and then taking more money from the taxpayer to pay for your services.
Ross Henley.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Can I say, this is a bad, bad budget, and this is where our chickens sadly come home to roost for Somerset, this budget. If you cannot get away with increasing council tax, the largest council tax rise of any council in the entire country, and still slashing services. Councillor Rosman, I've read it again and again, your manifesto pledge to the voters of Somerset with the 2013 election, our pledge for the next four years, we will continue to freeze council tax. You have broken, broken your promise to the voters of Somerset, and they will not forget it, and we will not allow them to forget your broken promise. You actually were elected under a false premise. I think it's appalling that you've gone out to the voters of Somerset with that pledge and broken it. Can I say, also, you're introducing a flooding tax, and I think you're being slightly disingenuous here, other counties face the same type of flooding we did in the winter of 2013, 2014. In Cumbria and Surrey, yes, they did, Cumbria and Surrey, they did, similar type things, none of them have introduced a flooding tax. I've had those discussions with councillors in Surrey, and in Lancashire, and in Cumbria, none of them have been...
On the levels, Adam Ross.
But I'm saying, all right, across the county, it's appalling, but I'm not decrying what happened to the levels, it was absolutely appalling. What the problem is, I'm criticising your ineptitude and administration of forcing all Somerset council tax for your Tory flooding tax, that's what it is, it's an absolute disgrace. 5.24% council tax rise, and how dare you go to government? I've been in those meetings with the leaders of Conservative County Run County Councils, right across the county, with the County Council Network, as my role as the Vice-Chair of that organisation, on to meetings with ministers, at no time ever was there any discussion taking place, government, please give us money, because we're struggling for the next four years, so we can actually put the money back in the piggyback, back in reserves. I mean, government would have laughed at this authority if we'd actually said, we want money to refund reserves. That money was given by government to refund services, I'm absolutely certain of it. I think it's disgraceful, you're cutting £956,000 from vulnerable people who suffer mental health issues, autism issues, and you're not using some of that £2.9 million to refund that services. I know where that money should be spent, it should be actually recharging some of our services to mental health people, to autism people, to our bus service users, I think it's appalling. You've got that money under false pretenses, it's disgraceful, and I think DCLG will be appalled that you put that money in the piggyback and not put it aback to recharge our services. You made a pledge, you broke your promise, you should be ashamed, you're introducing the highest council tax rise in the country, and you're cutting and slashing services as well. It exposes the financial incompetence of your authority over the last seven years. Here you are, you have charged this council of £27 million over the last seven years by your council tax freeze, but you've just backed it up by whacking up the council tax rise this year and slashed services as well. What's your authority about? What's your administration about? It's high taxes, poor services, and slashing services. You will be voted out by the voters next May.
John Ross, would you like to answer both the last two questions?
I'd be delighted to, but first, if Ross can come up with that prediction, can you pick my lottery numbers on Saturday? I'll take mine. I don't feel either of you are right. Thank you for the questions, a number of issues, I'll start with the last speaker first. It's not a bad budget, as I said before, it's a tough budget, you know, we have new burdens, new pressures on the authority, and we have to respond to those, and respond we are. Very, very interesting, let's talk about manifestos, because a few years ago, there was a Liberal Democrat manifesto, which actually also, I believe, I was sat next to Sam Pratt when he mentioned it, on BBC Somerset, saying, I will freeze council tax as well, for as long as I can, I know Sam's not here today, but, and we'll be here today, it's a bit of a jekyll and white, because Ross is up for putting up the council tax over a year, so, you know, they can't even come to a decision, so, there we are, there we are. Very sad, obviously, the comments made in relation to the Somerset Rivers Authority. I'd been out to Ross's patch, Rishdun, I believe, definitely in your patch, yes, and spoken firsthand with the residents there affected by flooding. Certainly, you can argue that, yes, yes, we should be putting this money elsewhere, but let's remember, the budget was going to be reliant on use of reserves, and now we are no longer using reserves. Why are we no longer using reserves? Because our reserves are not that great, and as I pointed out earlier, £336 million for Hampshire, and I'm just trying to find the number for Surrey, but I can't seem to locate it now, you know, we are at the bottom end of the reserves scale, so we do need to be prudent, because you never know what is around the corner, maybe another flooding crisis, so we do need to take that into account. I heard the previous speaker criticise the budget, but I don't see an alternative, ladies and gentlemen, so that's fine, my ideas are bad, fine, that's your view, you know, tell me, you know, what would you do differently? I don't see that in front of me today, so, well, I guess we just leave it at that. Completely take on board Jill's comments, thank her, yes, you know, obviously trying to balance out what we're doing for, you know, rural highways, honestly, you know, our adults and children don't always live in urban areas, they do live in the rural areas as well, but really, the same argument, a back-up, you know, we've got no reserves, we're not taking from those reserves, we're basically standing still, as I said previously. The financial prospects, four-year grant shows continuous revenue support grant reductions, year-on-year, to 2019 when it ends, and then, you know, really, we need to make sure that business rate retention comes in to support some of the money we have lost. So, regardless of whether you make these savings, regardless of whether you put up council tax, if the people had voted differently in 2013, you would still be in this position now of having to obviously reduce some services, and as we know, they would have put up the council tax for the last six years, and not taking into account the economic crash in 2008, and the things we did for every hard-working council taxpayer in Somerset, we froze the council tax for them for six years.
Jane, you're the next to speak. Thank you, Chair. Normally, it would be Sam standing at this point, but as we know, Sam can't be here today due to the operation he had on Monday, and thank you for your wishes, and I'm sure we all should be recovering. He's helped prepare our statement on the budget for 2016 to 2017, and as usual, would like to thank Kevin Nacy and his team, and also to the SLT, who give the time to discuss and explore important issues. We've heard times are tough, and we fully agree, and at the 11th hour, government have realised the rate support grant is flawed, and allowed an extra £2.9 million for this next year, far less than the £4 million Somerset lost in the settlement, and considerably less than the £24 million over two years Surrey has received. We've not had sight of your proposals until today for this sum, and so it's been incredibly difficult in the circumstances to prepare an alternative budget, but this is our statement. It is clear £2.9 million extra is woefully inadequate. The difference between the average county settlement and Somerset's is now £24 million, considerably more than the £11 million loss we were used to under the dampening rules. With a fair settlement from the government, Somerset would not be facing such horrendous decisions and cuts today, nor would council tax rises need to be the highest in the country. Our MPs need to do more to support us in ensuring a fairer deal for our county, and we call on them to step up and do the job they were elected for. Too often, they are conspicuous by their absence when it matters. I know from John that Marcus is supportive around government funding, and we appreciate that, but there are others who are not so supportive. Clearly, the demise of the rate support grant, Somerset will continue to be sold short, and we must look increasingly at our own devices, generating more income and achieving full cost recovery wherever possible, returning best value for money. We must be prudent with the relatively generous capital budget available to Somerset, and invest in the county to fulfil the needs of our communities, but surely we must also look at loans from the Public Works Loan Board, if we are serious about delivering the county plan, and take the best-to-say opportunities when available. A further increase in capital investment will build a stronger, more robust and vibrant county fit for the challenges ahead. We need to work with partners to build key worker housing to help attract permanent staff, and going further, to provide suitable homes for the vulnerable residents we have a responsibility for, to share the task between us, giving everyone confidence to work and live here. It is worth noting that many of our suggestions have been implemented over the years, and remind councillor, if we had been controlled, we would be in a very different place, different priorities and different solutions. Generating more income and protecting frontline services to a far greater degree. Estimated figures for the next three years, based on the maximum increases in council tax, show this council barely scraping through. Reserves have been raised to prop up inadequate children's services and meet demand for adult social care, both at the head of the queue for resources. A 2% rise in social care is unrealistic and far too little, far too late. After the extraordinary rounds of redundancies that took place some years ago, we find this authority in an even more extraordinary position, of paying over £12 million a year to just one of the many agencies it uses to provide temporary staff. In South Somerset alone, I understand there is not one permanent adult social worker, and still a 40% vacancy rate in adult children's social workers. To recruit permanent staff to these roles would save this authority £6 million a year. We must look harder for service cost recovery more quickly than shown in the budget papers, bring more children back from out-of-county care, improve processes to reduce time people are left waiting for assessments on hospital discharge. As you hear, we reject the flooding tax, and I won't dwell further on that, but another broken promise. What we do reject from the budget papers are the cuts in transport, we welcome the £80,000... We welcome the eighty thousand pounds for community transport, so vital in such a rural county, but we would want to use that money to reinvest in public transport. And whereas I understand the management issues around the nine hundred fifty six thousand pound reduction in mental health budget, I do believe that there is a missed opportunity to reinvest some of that money, two hundred thousand back, two hundred thousand pounds back into the service and a further two hundred thousand pounds to help prevent homelessness. I'm afraid we can't support the budget as it is for reasons that my colleagues have stated and we will not be doing so. So, thank you for listening and.
John Ossman, do you want to answer any of those points?
Just, I think maybe we need a conversation outside this room because you made a statement about all social care, permanent staff in the Somerset area. I do believe that's been accurate, but I think let's have a conversation outside of this room, I wouldn't want anyone to go away with the, with the wrong impression. Yes, you know, Jane rightly points out, we have used six million pounds from reserves or to support our children's social, social care. You know, those reserves, you can spend them once and they very rarely come back. That is why I think we need to be a little bit more prudent in relation to our reserves, you know, because you do not know what's on the, on, on the horizon, you don't know what's going to happen. And, you know, Surrey was mentioned by a previous speaker, with a hundred million pounds of reserves, they have a bit more freedom of flexibility than we do with very much less than that.
Derek Tansall, and then the final speaker. Oh, Alan, sorry. Alan, oh, both of you, oh, sorry. Alan, you're first, I do apologize, and then Dave Tansall will be.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree with the councillor calls, I did hear the primaries to say they're probably just a project, but that's another, finding another place unfortunately. But interestingly enough, the chief executor of purpose, Sir James Bellin of the Environment Agency, slated January 2016, after the floods in the north of England, York and Cumbria, the agency has enough money to tackle problems of dredging rivers where it makes sense. I would think you could tap them up for a few bob to help us, maybe, I don't know. I would agree with councillor Ripley as well regarding this budget proposal, I would agree with the capital expenditure and the others. I've got great concerns, say, the pathway for adults, just one of many. I know you're in a difficult position, I know it's not, this council's direct fault, it's with central government, not only the funding cuts, but the new policies that they have introduced all put pressure on this council. I would go to far and say that all efficiency savings and cutting of prices have been made. You've got rid of the fat, now they're cutting into the bone and the muscle. If it cuts too far, I don't think this council, with the best will it will, can really be that, such an inefficient organisation. I think there will be great concerns within the community, lots of services, everything about that. As I said, I support the capital spending, but not the other one. Thank you.
Rick Tansall.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I just want to ask a question about the reserves. You mentioned other authorities have had healthy reserves, why are some of them so poor?
Harvey Seeks, you can answer that for us.
I will finish, I will take any of my final comments, if that's okay.
Fine, that's perfect. Dave Tansall.
Chair, thank you. I wasn't going to speak at the day today, but I was, as always, inspired by some of the opposition's comments. Firstly, the leader of the opposition talking about some of Sam, I wish you were all the best recovery, some of Sam's old chestnuts, full cash recovery, that means charging people more in Liberal Democrat code and taking on more loans, which they already took on more than we could cope with. So, and in private, this, this comes up every year as a Liberal Democrat proposal, every year when I was sitting in Harvey's chair, Sam and I would always have the conversation outside the meeting and we would disagree about the proposals, about his proposals, because they didn't make any economic sense to the way we are. The business about the Conservative Party manifesto, the council tax freeze, a selective quote, because I actually wrote that part of the manifesto, it says, we will freeze council tax for as long as possible.
It does say that.
It does say that, because that's what it said. And thirdly, Jill, of course, always very plausible erudite, formerly in charge of the council, she knows how the government money works. Every day, certainly weekly from the cap, from the government, there is a bit more here or a bit less there. So you do need reserves and simply this year, the worst bit, which obviously the opposition are quite right to try and put on the thing, is that we are chucking money in reserves. The correct answer is, of course, we're not using our fragile reserves this time, we are using that two point seven million pounds right across the authority and as we are, to any measure of, of, of fact, a rural authority, they all, it all goes towards rural services everywhere. Thank you, Chair.
John Parham.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I just want to add some other things to the council proposal. What was mentioned by the opposition when they were, when they were talking about times was causal. The last time we were faced with a Liberal Democrat administration here and a Liberal Democrat administration in Mende, we saw council tax go up by sixteen percent in four years, sixty zero percent in four years. And that was at the time when the government grant was going up by five or six percent per year and, you know, we still, we still space those, those, those increases. And, you know, when I hear the, the opposition say, well, times were different then, it's not the same, it's not the same now, well, if you want to take an example of what the Liberal Democrats are doing now, you've only got lovely Shetland manor this year, where the Liberal Democrats on the Shetland town council decided that a prudent increase in the council tax will be ninety percent, thank you very much, nine zero percent increase in council tax put forward by the Liberal Democrats in Shetland manor. So I don't think we need to stand for any lessons in how to set a budget, I think we know perfectly well how to do it, we need to only increase council tax when we have to and we don't increase it when we don't need to, so thank you very much.
Harvey, would you, Alan. Harvey, would you like to add a debate and then we'll go to a named vote and we all will take the vote.
Thank you. It's interesting that it's now called a flooding tax. When the various councillors have supported the work of the independent drainage boards, it's been accepted that that's part of the way we deal with the challenges of living in Somerset, especially on the levels. I think she has a completely different model and I think perhaps people ought to look into those. It's also quite rightly that, as the leader has said, we are very clearly making the point and with the government that it's, we are funding it this way for this year, it is not being consolidated into the budgets, we are expecting and whilst John May have his concerns, the government have not declined to take it forward into legislation. Much was made about what it costs the ratepayers of, or saving in fact, the ratepayers because our council freeze. Well, let's just remember that when we inherited this government from our predecessors, the bill to service their debt was thirty six million, which sort of traps the comment about twenty seven million. But that was a yearly cost when we undertook it, thirty six million pounds to service the debt, remembering that they'd moved fifty million extra into that debt as their final gesture as the government of this council. So don't let's talk about costs of freezing tax, let's just remember the burdens which we undertook, which were saddled on us by another authority. Or frankly, it's a shame that our five Somerset MPs have been accused of not being vocal. Sorry, I've seen more solidarity from those five than I did from perhaps the previous five, but that's perhaps a perspective of mine. You're right, we always will look at loans, perhaps we're more nervous than some others, it's certainly better than it was, but it's certainly what saddled us with huge debts. Let us manage our government here, let us give them the chance to actually deal with it, looking at the case rather than the hysteria that comes from the other side. Exaggeration, well, I'll give Jane that it's perhaps inaccurate, but some of the figures she quoted are totally not recognized by the gentleman ladies behind me. So if she has the evidence and can produce it and give it to the officers, I'd rather that they test its validity rather than me just saying exaggeration seems to be the watchword. Alan Dimmock, well, it's good to have a profit of Dimmock, Alan. We need one that just keeps that word with us. Thank you. As we notice the reserves, why are they low? Because we have used them, they have never been that high. Funding that sort of debt has been a steady burden that I talked about earlier and our reserves have been managed prudently. Like some of the other side, I don't like to give too much in reserves, it's better that we spend and spend prudently. If you look at the level of our reserves, they were actually dipping below what is advised by our, by our auditors. So we're not putting money back into reserves, we are maintaining them at a level which our auditors actually have cautioned us we should. And as you well know, because you actually read the documents, that is part of our risk assessments and was highlighted. Unfortunately, not everybody looks in that detail. I'm pleased that you do and I'm glad the profit has been for that reason. Thank you. I second this proposal and ask that we have a named vote on the medium term financial program.
And you'll do that now? Probably take it for short.
No, we're going to take it in two parts, all votes.
No, you didn't get a second for your, you didn't propose it, but it was not seconded, so we'll just have one.
Then that's, so, yeah, if the request were a second, I'm happy to support that. I was thinking.
You should have spoken earlier, you said about fifteen minutes ago, I wrote it down, but you passed it and I said, nobody said we did. Nobody did. The gentleman over there, he thought it was something.
Chair, just for clarity, it would be a shame because you're now in effect voting a whole lot, voting against the vote proposals, potentially having to be split separately, the capital will have full support.
I said at the very beginning that we'd free vote, this is the second vote, the final one was on county plan, I said very clearly, and certainly the leader. If you wanted that, you should have said, I made it very clear. You, you made yours clear, but you didn't get a second. The gentleman over there, he said.
Thank you, Chair. So we are voting on, in the schedule, capital investment program which is A, the revenue budget proposal which is B, as revised by the additional paper that's tabled, so that takes into account the changes to the figures, C which is overarching approval, to note the robustness of the estimates paper, and finally, the fair funding for Somerset proposal at E. What about B? I covered B. For your attention, I forgive me, sorry, forgive you, just a clarification, I thought you went from C to E. A, capital investment program, B, revenue budget, C, overarching proposal, D, robustness of the estimates, E, fair funding for Somerset. So all those in favor, please indicate. Four, when I reach out in name, all those against, please say no. Mr Angus?
Four.
Miss Bowden?
Four.
Mr Brown?
Four.
Mr Boris Clayton?
Four.
Mr Coles?
Against.
Mr Davies?
Against.
Mr Denby?
Four.
Mr Dimmock? Mr Enney?
Four.
Mr Fothergill?
Four.
Mr Fish?
Four.
Mr Gloke?
No.
Mr Govey?
Against.
Mr Green?
Against.
Mrs Grosscall?
Four.
Mr Hall?
Four.
Mr Ham?
Four.
Mr Healy?
Four.
Mr Henley?
Against.
Mrs Hill?
Four.
Mr Horsthall?
Against.
Mr Hunt?
Four.
Mr Huxtable?
Four.
Mrs Lawrence?
Four.
Lieutenant Commander Hardy?
Four.
Mr Lewis?
Four.
Mrs Locke?
Against.
Mr Locke?
Against.
Mr Lovridge?
Against.
Mr Napper?
Four.
Mrs Nicholson?
Four.
Mr Noel?
Four.
Mrs Oliver?
Four.
Mr Osman?
Four.
Mr Parry?
Four.
Mr Pearce?
Against.
Mr Price-Ackey?
Against.
Mr Redman?
Against.
Mr Ripley?
Against.
Mr Rudden?
Four.
Mr Shortman?
Against.
Mr Six?
Four.
Mr Tanswell?
Against.
Mr Bennet?
Against.
Mrs Vijay?
Four.
Mr Wallace?
Four.
Mr Alan Waddock?
Against.
Mr Danny Waddock?
Against.
Mr Woodmore?
Four.
Mr Walter Adams?
Four.
Mr Yobbs?
Four.
Harvey Seeks is requested to speak.
Sorry, Chair, it's just an apology, I had it on my notes, but as I was chuffing papers, I did want to finish my round nine with the thanks to the officers for all the hard work, the huge amount, the way they took it through scrutiny, the way they took it through cabinet, they behaved in a very professional fashion, as I would expect, but I didn't want it recorded that that was very much the end of it and should be paid for.
And the results are?
Thank you, Chair. Four thirty-one against twenty four hours.